Good afternoon. At this time, I'll call our City Council work session to order. We have one item in open session this afternoon, and that is student generation rates, level of service standards, and adequate public facilities. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor Vice Members of Council, Bob Goomis, interim director of planning and community development will provide the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon. Today, I would like to brief City Council about proposed amendments to the adequate public facilities ordinance concerning in particular schools that will be coming for your consideration in the near future. We will also touch base on how the need to advance capacity will be evaluated and processed, and we may even touch base on some policy issues and considerations that can be factors germane to this matter. Briefly, you will recall that City Council recently has expressed concerns revolving around this matter with the general thought being that the approach may be flawed in some manner. Possible culprits that City Council directed staff to look into were the generation rates used in the adequate public facility ordinance as well as the level of service standards used to determine the impact new development has on the school system as well as the need to maintain more current data, and possible problems with the methodology and formula itself. Whatever the issue, it has been clear that actual student enrollment is not occurring at a rate suggested by the current process. Accordingly, the city, in consideration with the school system, hired consultants to look into this matter and to provide recommendations for further consideration. The results of this work effort are based for the proposed amendments and modifications. Copies of the various final reports have been provided to you, I believe, for your reference in the future. Before we get into specific changes that are being proposed, let's quickly review the methodology and factors used to determine the need to advance school capacity. Factors used include the existing capacity of the school facility itself, the existing enrollment, the anticipated number of new students to be generated by proposed approved development, and the level of service requirements needed to meet any additional demand. In this example, for example, we have a school of a total capacity of 1,000 students. Its current enrollment is 850 students, and the future demand from committed development, previous rezonings and the like, are 100 students. Based on this, this leaves an available capacity of a surplus of 50 students. Now suppose we're looking at a new rezoning where the future demand from this new development is 75 students. Thereby, you can see that there is a deficit in the available capacity in the future of 25 students, and as such, there's a need to either defer or advance capacity. I do want to point out one thing, that when calculating the number of new students that are generated by a proposed development, we do give credit to the number of students that would be generated from the by right, the base zoning. So, for example, if you're rezoning from a category that would allow, say, 25 units to the subdivision of 25 units, and you're increasing the rezoning to be 50 homes, we would give you the credit for those original 25 students. So, we're not counting the additional total of 50 new residential units that would be coming up. So, let's now examine these factors a little more closely. This table summarizes the results of the study conducted by our consultants in regard to student generation rates. In developing this information, the consultants utilized data that was specific to the city of Suffolk that basically took two years of actual student enrollment data from the school system, which included home addresses and grade level, and were then able to assign those students to actual neighborhoods. In turn, we were then able to determine the actual student generation rates by housing type and school grade level for the Suffolk School System during that period. We then used these results and the averages of the values over the two-year period in order to establish proposed amendments to our adequate public facility standards. So, in this slide, you will note that the center columns show what the proposed new generation rates would be compared to, on the left, three columns, what the current student generation rates would be for single-family and multifamily development. And you can see that while the data from that we are currently used is dated, the generation rates are not substantially In regards to the level of service standards, you will recall that once, one of the assignments given to the consultant was to provide recommendations that will be helpful in the capital programming and planning efforts in the future. This includes recommendations with regards to the size of new school facilities, which in turn translates into the square foot per student, the construction estimates for schools, as well as actual enrollment projections for the Suffolk School Shown here are the recommendations pertaining to the size of future new facilities and expansion. Generally, you'll see that the smaller the facility that may be built, the greater the level of service standard. This may be in part and within reason attributed to larger schools are a little more efficient than a smaller school in that, for example, the number of classrooms and the classroom space in comparison to the overall size of the school is at a higher proportionate share. For example, all schools need to have lynchroom facilities. They might not be as large, but those facilities still need to be here. So, the consultant looked at a range of recommended sizes for schools. So, if you were looking to build a elementary school, for example, of 750 or less students, then the suggested level of service at that school at the elementary level would be 145 square feet per student in comparison to 125 square feet for a elementary school that might be 750 to 1,050 students in size. And they did this across the board with regards to recommended size for schools, recognizing that there are efficiencies within reasoning both for smaller and larger schools. So, you could get too small, or you could become too large that the school actually just doesn't function very well. So, again, based on the study results and recommendations provided, we averaged these values together in order to develop proposed new level of service standards for inclusion as an amendment to the adequate public facilities ordinance. In this case, we averaged those ranges at the elementary, middle, and high school, and this table compares those to the current rates. You can see, with the exception of the elementary schools, the rates actually have decreased slightly, but they're still within very close proximity to each other. Now, I would like to discuss how this information is utilized and applied. So, we also asked the consultant to review our methodology and calculation formula. What we found is that our current approach is sound and acceptable. Nevertheless, we have all observed that the actual numbers of enrollment has not increased at a rate or at the actual numbers that may be suggested by simply the formula that we've been using in the past in our calculations. The reason for this is, I believe, that to a certain degree, we've all misunderstood that our calculation formula, which includes consideration of approved committed development, is not a forecasting tool. It does not forecast future enrollment. Rather, it simply identifies the number of new students that can be expected to be generated by approved new development coming online. It does not evaluate other factors that account to school enrollment, such as student attrition, or the rate or timing of any new development that may be coming online. Accordingly, when reviewing the historical and forecast enrollment, it became obvious that there's a need to modify how we determine not only the possible need to advance capacity for proposed future development, but also how we calculate the actual need to advance capacity when that new development comes online. Having said that, we will begin to implement a two-step evaluation process to address this issue. It will continue to be based on our existing approach, which has been concluded to be sound and appropriate. However, it will give much more weight to the existing enrollment at the time new development actually comes online and has been constructed. Here is an example showing how this modification process will work. This is the exact same table that we had previous. This would be the first step. So, a new application, at the time of application for a rezoning, and it comes to you for consideration, we will analyze the potential need to advance capacity. If the capacity is determined to be sufficient, then as is the case today, no further consideration would be warranted. However, if the analysis indicates that there is a deficit in capacity or a projected potential deficit, then there is a need to consider the advancement of capacity in the approval process. However, next, and this is an important change, at the time that we receive a request for a building permit or the certificate of occupancy of a new home in that approved development, we will then reexamine the actual need to advance capacity. And this is in order to accommodate when the new development actually is constructed and comes online. This analysis will only consider the existing capacity and enrollment of the schools that is under consideration compared to the number of students being generated by those new homes that are requesting a building permit or certificate of occupancy. We will not consider the approval of other committed or pipeline development that will be completed at some point in the future. In this way, we will mirror the actual and current enrollment figures that are occurring and will also account for the timing of new development as it comes online over time. Finally, returning to the assignment given to the consultants pertaining to capital programming and planning recommendations, I would like to provide a brief synopsis about the estimated cost for new facilities that they provided. Shown here is a summary of the results and recommendations provided by the consultants. In developing this analysis, consideration was given to actual construction costs for new schools in the state of Virginia. You will note in particular that so as not to have the cost overestimated by, for example, the cost of a school in northern Virginia as compared to here, more weight in the calculation and the factor is given to schools that are first built in the city of Suffolk, and then, second, within the region, recognizing that those costs are going to be more similar to what we would likely experience than are in other states. But it does look at the cost of new constructions for various schools at the middle, elementary, middle, and high school level. And this table, you can see, provides a total cost per square foot as being a final number that can be utilized in the programming of cost. Accordingly, in regard to the need to advance capacity, there are a few things and a few factors that I do believe we all should keep in mind. Provided here is a list of some of those. First, that any need to advance capacity is intended to mitigate and be directly attributable to the new development only. We only include the construction cost when considering this. We do not include the cost of improvements or renovations to a facility that do not actually add capacity. We do not include the cost to cover the capital interest payments and debt service associated with the project. We do not include the cost for furniture and equipment or the actual operation and staffing requirements for any new school. So, in conclusion, as listed here, some of the key takeaways from this work effort that we've undertaken, and these are, the results and recommendations for changes in the adequate public facility ordinance are based on the finding of our consultants. The methodology has been determined to be sound, accurate, and acceptable. While other communities may do it different, this certainly is one way that is acceptable. The results and recommendations are based on the public school values specific to the city of Suffolk. So, for example, previously, we utilized census data from the American Community Survey that is done periodically. These values were based on the region, and then they're modified based on our school system enrollments to get to that level generation rate. But in this case, we actually use data that's specific only to the city of Suffolk and is recent. The analysis and impact of new development is equitable and based on factors that are directly attributable to that new development. Also, again, pointing out that we provide a credit to the developer for the number of students that would have been generated by whatever by right development he would have had, had he chosen to build in that capacity. Keep in mind that through our proffer system, we are not able to accept contributions for the by right development. A developer that goes into zoned land, that is, that he does not seek a rezoning or a conditional use permit, is not under no consideration with regards to the impact of what that development may have on the school system. By contrast, a rezoning, while they certainly have the advantage of increasing the number of units that they may be able to yield, they are accountable for their increase. But again, we do give them credit for the by right development. The cost to advance capacity included in advancing the capacity is a proportionate share to the construction cost only, as I've pointed out. And then finally, again, our approach is going to be modified to include a two-step process in order to account for the timing of new development and the actual need to advance capacity when that new development comes online. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn the floor back over to you and City Council and be available for questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goomis. Indeed, a considerable amount of information to try to digest all at one time. But at this time, I'll ask for questions and comments from council.
I have one question.
Hold on a second. Let me get counsel person bother bother.
Bob, can you go back to the slide where you had the total cost? I just, I don't quite understand how the figures that you have were generated.
Yes, I'll walk you through this. And there's a more detailed table. This is a summary, but there's a very detailed table in the information that was provided to you that actually shows individual schools, the number of schools, the cost, and so forth, both within the region, Suffolk, and other areas of the city. But you'll see, of course, the first column is the level of school, elementary, middle, and high school. So, the first two columns represent schools that were built in the city of Suffolk recently. The local cost for those schools, the elementary school, which would been Florence Bowser, was $220.29 per square foot. The middle school, Colonel Fred Cherry, was a cost of $244.37 per square foot. There's no high school. The most recent high school that we had built was Kings Fork, which I believe was 2,000. So, this information, I believe, was basically over the past three years or so. So, for the local schools, recognizing that those are the factors or the environment we're dealing in, those costs were given a weighted factor of five. Within the region, schools that, similar schools that were built within the region, the costs are shown there, and they were given a factor of only three. They're similar. It's within our area, but they weren't specific to Suffolk. And then, the remaining schools that were evaluated for the rest of Virginia were simply given a weighted factor of one to come up with the total cost.
So, I guess the part that's confusing to me is on that total cost line. That's a number that's bigger than any of the other numbers. So, how did that one get inflated? I mean, what's added into that to make it higher than, I understand that the elementary and the middle school were historical, but...
Part of those costs also include, and maybe you can't see it, whoops, excuse me, Andy showed me, is that the cost in that last column include both the construction hard cost as well as soft cost, and then the consultant also added a contingency to address things that would happen over time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yeah, Bob, my question was on the ratio and how you figure the number of students that's going to be, because we have approved permits, I would say, five years old or maybe older, and how do you figure in those numbers that will be accumulated, and houses that are not being built when you're building a school?
Well, again, in this table, I don't believe shows the committed, keep in mind that when we look at committed development, there's a certain definition compared to pipeline development. Pipeline could be things that receive a rezoning, and it might just sit there for a long time, doesn't come in with a site plan, or a subdivision plat, or engineering plan, and those things, but it's out there. We want to keep an eye on that ball. But committed development is development that have reviewed, approved, or received various governmental approvals, such as a subdivision plat. So, they are definitely moving forward towards the development. So, and I believe I understand your question. If I don't, let me know.
I will.
Just looking at our general procedure, and this would not change at the time of rezoning under either scenario. Again, we have a school with 1,000 students, and from that, there's a current enrollment of 850 at the time that application came in the door. So, we would subtract those students out from that total capacity. We would also then, per the ordinance and per our consideration, to be sure that we take into account take into account future development. We don't want to ignore it. We then also subtract out the projected current demand for that committed development that is coming down the pike at some time. This, in this case, it would be the 100 students. So there's still an available capacity at that school after we account for all of that committed development of 50 students. So in this example, the developer has come in and he is he's looking to generate 75 students. Well, the 50 students he can take advantage of, the remaining 25 students that there is a deficit for, we would consider the need to advance capacity. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Goomis. Appreciate your presentation. Just two questions. One, can you kind of educate me on how they came up with the weight factors between the three weight factors that are up there, the five, three, and one? Who derives at the weight factor and how do they come to that weight factor?
In that case, we relied on the expertise of the consultants, both. There were two firms involved who are experts with regards to the the design and construction of school facilities, architects, as well as capital programmers. And again, those numbers were were based on their past experience, recognizing that local costs are are more reliable, if you will, to be accurate than simply looking at some average cost over the state, for example. So we we did rely on on their expertise with regards to that. Again, that is in terms of capital programming. So as a cap as the CIP has developed, those those would be considered. I'm not necessarily saying that those would be the costs that would eventually be included in the the capital program, proposed capital programming, but it's a good starting point, and it would be something that is consistent of, excuse me, consistent over over time. You know, a school might be identified for year 10. Obviously, as it becomes closer to being year one, those values are going to become more refined.
Okay. And the other thing I I heard you say briefly in your presentation is a by right. So if a developer comes in as a by right development, it's hands off as far as this particular criteria that you presented today would even be involved in the calculation. Is that correct?
That's correct. Virginia does not allow, we do not have impact fees for public services. There are maybe some few exceptions, but for the most part, we do not have impact fees. So a by right development where the land is already zoned appropriately, and keep in mind that at some point in time, you know, a decision by city council, whether it's this body or 20 years ago, was made that this is the appropriate zoning for that piece of property. So it's already been considered what impact that may have. So by right development is available. A developer can come in and do a subdivision based on that density without the need to make a contribution or consideration of the impact.
Okay. That was my question is, is it a matter of the capacity at that point because it's a mute factor? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Goomis.
Mr. Mayor, do you would like to interject something?
Yeah, for Councilman Fawcett's first question, we'll get a little bit more defined information on the factors for you prior to your action.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? I have a few questions or or observations, I might say. Obviously, the student generation rate is huge as far as future planning is concerned, not only to consider our facility needs, but also in regards to the building industry, where two things need to be established, a student generation rate that we can live with, that their industry can count on when they're doing their performance statements and their marketing, and then also the dollar value of each one of those students. We just got a lot of information that we didn't have before. We had a synopsis, I guess, of of what's in there. And you mentioned that, am I sure I understand about half of what we just got, but we'll get there, but the key is that if I'm hearing you correctly, we are going to use a new methodology as far as an approach to determine the effect of the students that are going to be generated as far as capacity is concerned. It seemed like there were a couple of things there, the by right, and then a new methodology that would be a two-step process that also accounts for time. Could you just briefly explain to me, not in great detail, but with the changes that we're making, just in the big scheme of things, how would that compare to how we've been considering costs before, which I believe was, the school costs 100 grand, we got 100 students, everybody pays $1,000. So compared to that, where are we now?
Again, with regards to the value per student or the value per home, that can that's a mathematical equation based on the cost and, as you say, dividing the school capacity, that proposed school capacity by the total number of students and so forth. The the distinction here is that, again, at the time of rezoning, we would identify the potential need that down the road, it looks like there may be a deficit in capacity and need to consider advancing capacity to account for that. The second step, though, however, gets to the crutch, I believe, that we all recognize in thinking that all of that committed development is just being piled on top of the existing enrollment, which is not the case. It's there's students are graduating, students are moving away and so forth. And so the second step is that when a developer, after he's received his rezoning and he's recognized, I may have an impact and and I've offered a proffer to address that impact, that we would then, when he comes in to actually obtain his building permit or his certificate of occupancy, that's when that need is really there because now we're adding that student. At that point, we would then reevaluate, look at simply the the current enrollment and the school capacity, and if there's a surplus, then his need would be met. His timing, he might, you know, a developer coming in today may get his rezoning, get his subdivision and engineering done very quickly in comparison to the example the vice mayor pointed out, we might have somebody who got their rezoning and it just sits there. Well, under the existing scenario, they're kind of, it's a first come, first served. So this would account for the timing that that new development comes on and whether or not there is the actual need for additional capacity. So if I'm the developer, there's a potential, but I come in today and there's adequate capacity in in northern shores or what have you for the 10 new homes that I've just built, then that need to pay that proffer, if you will, is not necessary.
Okay, so it's going to be based on not what's in the pipeline, but what is currently being proposed, or it's somewhere in the process. So that person who had a rezoning five years ago, they may have to, if if someone uses that capacity before they submit site plans and everything, then that prior developer, in essence, would end up with having to proffer for the additional capacity. So it's not based on time per se as far as the rezoning?
Well,
Kind of.
It's 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 based on both. Under under the the first step will be, at the time of rezoning, we would do the calculations with committed development, and if there's already existing capacity to accommodate that development, whenever it might come down the line, based on on our evaluation at the time of rezoning, we would simply say, there's adequate capacity, there's no further consideration. So they would not, you know, just because they came in after somebody else to build, they would not be responsible for needing to advance capacity because we've already approved their rezoning without a need to advance capacity. The change is for the developer that comes in when he gets his rezoning, and there is a question about the need to advance capacity. So at that point, he's he'll make an obligation to say, if there is the need capacity at the time of building permit, then I would advance that capacity at whatever value. But if he comes in for those 10 building permits and there's still plenty of capacity and we're not accounting, at that time, we're not counting any future development that may or may not come down the line at some point. We are simply looking at existing conditions with regards to the school and his development and making a determination of, yes, there's adequate capacity in that facility right now.
Okay. Well, I've got a little bit, not a little bit, I've got a lot to learn about trying to figure out how this is all coming together. I am, and I did, this is just a comment. In regards to student generation rate, I'm surprised that it's as close as what we've had because it doesn't match up with the actual numbers. I mean, student enrollment was down 200 last year, and I'm just curious, as far as the study is concerned, when it seems like you look at the type of housing, but did they look at where that housing is going to be, the demographics, and does that particular area lend itself to more homeschooling or those individuals sending their children to private school? Because obviously, that's what's happening. You know, the students that have been generated somewhere, but a lot of them now are either being homeschooled or going to private school. So did the study take that into consideration? You know, do you know if they did or not?
It was the 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 generation rates were for each type of housing were based on the citywide attendance. But again, they did not include just school-aged children. They included only students that are enrolled in Suffolk Public Schools.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess this is based off the classroom size. Each teacher will have a certain 20 students or 30 students in the classroom to get your maximum. Is that how that was figured, I guess?
That is generally, I would say, the the philosophy or approach. I'm not a school designer, and certainly, schools from when I was in elementary school are vastly being constructed different today than they they were then. Certainly, there's also a need to accommodate technology and and the like. So in general, I would say that that is certainly the approach.
Well, the reason I-
But we are looking at the the total capacity, the number of the schools a school is designed to be able to handle.
All right. I I'm only bringing it up for the purpose that that we have 1,000 students, say, say there, that's 100%. That's the 100% mark. There's some school systems that allow you to go over capacity on that, go up to 120% before any proffers are required by by anyone. So I'm just interested in how that was figured and and how some go to up to 120 or 110% or 120% of capacity to allow that before profits are put in as opposed to at 100%. Because you might be adding, let's say you have a classroom of of 20 kids, you might be adding one kid to the classroom. I mean, that doesn't seem like a lot of kids, one more added to it, so to that capacity, but then we're going to offer for a proffer for that. So I I just make that as a part of it because I need to read this also and how how it was all done. So thank you.
Yeah, if 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 I may just respond briefly, we wanted to be sure we provide you with the the actual numbers as best we can determine those. Certainly, consideration to other policy issues, such as what you're saying, you know, if the capacity doesn't exceed 10%, maybe that's something that we should take into consideration. So those are certainly issues that can be and probably should be evaluated, but that is a policy, a decision for this body.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goomis. All right, that concludes our open session, part of our work session. We do have a motion for a closed session. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-371188 and A1, the consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations, for the community policy and management team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Fine Arts Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Sister Cities Commission, the Southeastern Public Service Authority, the Planning Council, and the Western Tidewater Community Services Board. And item two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-371188, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding proposed redistricting plans.
Counsel, motion being ordered. Councilman Fawcett?
Gouve to approve, may I?
Motion for approval. We have a second. Councilman Goldberg with a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our work session. We reconvene at 7:00 PM.
Six, six, six.
Oh, six? That's right. Damn. Used to be seven.